The time is 6:45. This is a special study session for the city of Emeryville. So I'd like to announce that Councilmember Carr and Mayor Welch are participating remotely under the just cause exception provided by AB 2449, and I will be the presiding officer for this evening. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bouders.
Point of order. For AB 2449, does the parties who are participating remotely need to declare that who's in the room with them before we begin?
Following a roll call, Councilmember Bouders. It's when we have that in our rules of procedure.
Okay, here.
Councilmember Carr is absent. Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Here.
And Mayor Welch?
Next, we have the approval of the final agenda.
Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor, I just wanted to note that I am attending remotely due to just cause, and there is no one above the age of 18 here with me in the room.
Thank you for clarifying.
I also believe that Supervisor Carr has joined.
Member Carr?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for accommodating me. Yes, I'm participating remotely today as well, according to AB 2449, and there is no one over the age of 18 where I am, and, yes, I'm alone in the location.
Thank you, Member Carr. Next, we have approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Next, ex parte communications. Do we have any ex parte communications related to this study session?
None here.
Seeing and hearing none. We can move to a public comment. This is the time for public comment for items not on this agenda. Any members of the public who wish to make public comment, you have two minutes and can proceed to the podium.
I have in my hand here a rare document. It's rare because the city of Emeryville doesn't want us to know about this, apparently, because it's not, it's a public document produced by the city of Emeryville, but it's not on the website. So because it's not on the website, I have to assume that the city doesn't want us to know about it. But I managed to get it anyway. It's, it's a, it comes from Resolution Number 23-125. It's also known as the Code of Ethics and Conduct for Elected and Appointed Officials. And the compelling thing about this document, certified by Mayor Welch and the rest of the council in 2023, is the following. Number three, conduct of members, and by members they mean council members. And I'm just going to read directly from this document that's been certified by the council. The professional and personal conduct of members must be above reproach to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the characters or motive of other members, the public, and staff. This requirement is applicable to mayors at all times. So that's going to come back to haunt Mayor Welch, that, that number three from this document that she certified. In addition, in this document is wording that I don't have it highlighted.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, see you next time.
Are there any other public comments for items not on this agenda? I'll close public comment, and we can move to item 6.1, the study session regarding the Emeryville Arts Center. Director Smalley?
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and city council members. We're here for our study session item. Just give me a moment for the PowerPoint to come up on the arts center. And this is really an update and a study session, a continuation of the work we started earlier this year. Next slide, please. So for those that aren't aware, this is the area we're talking about, this building at 4060 Hollis, right behind City Hall. It's a longtime project of the city to construct an arts center at this location. Next slide, please. A little bit of background, we acquired this property, the agent, Redevelopment Agency acquired this property in March of 2006, and various plans were advanced to develop the arts center on this site for many years, culminating in a lease disposition and development agreement, or LDDA, that was terminated in October of 2022. In May of '23, the city council established its priorities for the upcoming fiscal year and again affirmed that the arts center is one of the top priorities of the city council. On July 18th, the city council held a study session with the topic of which was how to restart this project and what implementation pathway to take, and direction was given at that time to staff. We came back with last update to the city council was in February of this year, when we gave a brief update, and the council authorized a contract with Artist Love and J. Johnstone Consulting to advance the project. Next slide, please. So the council's direction at the last, at that study session was to maintain the project objectives that had been originally set out back in about 2017, which you can see here, minimize the subsidy but ensure fiscal sustainability of the operations, maximize civic and community art space uses, get the project done quickly, and use robust community engagement to develop the programming. The council also maintained the key elements, but asked us to solicit additional input from the community. Those key elements that were identified then were space for the annual celebration of the arts exhibition, dedicated managed gallery space, and flexible space that can be used for performing arts in particular and other events. And the council did direct staff to proceed with a hybrid implementation approach, meaning build a building that can be built now, but with the, with the budget that we have in hand. But the council was very keen to ensure that whatever the project looked like was responsive to the community's needs and that outreach was conducted to that end. Next slide, please. The council also directed staff to create a task force to advise the staff and the city council on, on the project and pathways to implementation, and asked us to advise on the initial design that was usable and inclusive, and identify viable methods to fund ongoing operations. Next slide, please. So we did that. We put that task force together, and we call it the Arts Center Advisory Group. You can see the, the membership there. This was reported out to you at that meeting in February of this year. They were appointed in December of '23. Next slide, please. Also in February, as I mentioned, you authorized the contract with Artist Love, Jean Johnstone Consulting. Their scope includes reviewing all of the documentation, and there's a lot of it for the number of times this project has been attempted, to get familiar with the history, to conduct outreach, coordinate with the cultural district activities and programs, engage with the Arts Center Advisory Group, and notably, in response to city council direction, evaluate whether adaptive reuse of the existing building is the best pathway, most efficient pathway to project completion. Those items that I've underlined on this slide are the items that are either ongoing now or are completed. They, they're also scoped to analyze operation funding models and develop a framework for operating this, this facility. Through the development of this work thus far, we've learned a few lessons, some pretty significant ones that merit an update to this council, and really, some decisions need to be made about the path forward as a result of our findings thus far. Next slide, please. So here's the update. The outreach, while it remains ongoing, it has commenced, it's started. Artist Love, Jean Johnstone Consulting have been conducting interviews, focus groups, and studio visits, visits of other arts centers, interviews with folks that run these facilities, and we've had multiple meetings with the Arts Center Advisory Group. The key, some of the key conclusions that have come from those initial meetings are that the community needs, the Arts Center Advisory Group advises that the, that the community needs are, are very important, more important than getting it done fast is to get it done well. They also endorsed that this needs to be a comprehensive facility that addresses all of those key elements that, that the city council endorsed, including gallery, performing art space, and flex studio spaces. The advisory group also feels strongly that there needs to be a connection to City Hall, that this location that has been identified and worked on for many years is the right location for the project, and identified the need for strong partnerships and collaboration in order to make this work. As I mentioned, the outreach work is continuing, but these are the initial findings from those conversations. Next slide, please. Perhaps more salient to this discussion, the building, the evaluation of whether adaptive reuse is the path forward for this project is the most efficient path forward. That work has largely been completed through Letty Maitham Stacey, or LMS Architects, a subcontractor to Artist Love and Jean Johnstone. They've completed a fairly comprehensive analysis that compares what it would take to build a flexible gallery, performing art space, classroom and support spaces, those spaces that have been identified as key elements, either through adaptive reuse or through new construction. Excuse me. One of the findings, which might be surprising, is that the costs are actually comparable. Thirty-eight million to forty-five million for adaptive reuse. New construction is slightly more, but it overlaps, forty-one million to forty-six-point five million. It's important to note that those are construction costs only. It's not design, construction management, and construction administration. That's just the hard cost of construction. Excuse me. More surprisingly, at least to me, is they, they did a high-level embodied carbon analysis of the two options. This is, without getting very technical about it, is a, is a measure of what is the, the environmental efficiency of the overall project. And interestingly, they're comparable, whether you do adaptive reuse or new construction. The reason for that is that it takes a lot of work in this existing building to get to the functions of the arts center. It requires a lot of work. The condition of the building is poor, and it wasn't built to be a performing arts center. It's a factory, so it requires a lot of work. It is true that if you look only at construction, there's less embodied carbon involved in the initial construction. If you use parts of the existing building, that's slightly less. But if it's new construction, you can build a higher performing building envelope. It's more efficient to run over the long run, and so that largely offsets, not totally, but largely offsets the, the carbon savings of adaptive reuse. The other thing to note is that new construction provides a lot more flexibility in how you configure the space, obviously. If you're working within an existing factory, the building envelope is known, and you end up having to create different massing, different spaces within the building in order to accommodate some of these needs that require higher ceilings, or that require different window penetrations, things like that. So that, that's the main findings from the building evaluation. We took these in two meetings to the Arts Center Advisory Group to discuss this, because one thing that's embodied in that list of findings is that this project's much more expensive than we initially understood in today's market. It's, you know, by back of napkin, we're talking about something that's in the neighborhood of $1,200 a square foot, really comparably under either option. That implies that the pathways forward either need to be downscoping what this is and providing less of the key elements, or phasing the project. And then the question becomes, which element do you build first, and can you get to a functional phase, segment of the project? Or the third option is find a different funding plan and build the whole thing. The Arts Center Advisory Group was unanimous and very direct in its recommendation that it be comprehensive, as I mentioned on the earlier slide, that the project doesn't function well if it only has one of these elements, and that it really needs to be all of those key elements in order to be responsive to the community, which was one of the requests of the city council's direction. I mentioned the location near City Hall was also cited by the, the group as important. And then finally, the recommendation from the group is to engage the services of a capital fundraising consultant that's knowledgeable about how you fund these kinds of capital campaigns, to engage them to come up with a funding plan and various options to move forward so that we can get to a number that's more in the neighborhood of 40 million, as opposed to the slightly less than 11 million that we have currently programmed for this project. Next slide, please. So that leads to my discussion questions for the council, for the next steps forward. They're in your staff report, and they're fairly straightforward. Does the council agree with the Arts Center Advisory Group's recommendation, excuse me, to implement the comprehensive project, including all of the key elements? Second, I would like to ask whether the council supports us going out and retaining a consultant to help us come up with a funding plan to move forward. If the answer is yes, we go forward with the comprehensive project. And then finally, and, and this question is less definitive, I think, at this point, we can do more work to answer this one yet, because there is still ongoing outreach happening. But does the council, given the, the results of this analysis showing the costs embodied carbon comparable, but flexibility somewhat greater in new construction, does the council at this point have any advice for us in proceeding in terms of whether the project is new construction or adaptive reuse? And the council need not give direction on that specifically at this time, because the amount is comparable either way. We can, we can research that more and have more engagement with the community on that question if the council so desires. I am accompanied with, some of the members of the Arts Center Advisory Group are here today, as well as Sharman and Jean from Artist Love, Jean Johnstone Consulting, if you have any specific questions for the consultant group. And I'm also happy to answer questions you may have. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Smalley. Do we have any questions before we proceed to public comment? Member Pryforce?
I went online. We're good? Okay. Which legal entities have been created to facilitate the fundraising so far?
We have not created any legal entity to operate or raise funds for this. It's just the city at this point.
Okay. Has, the consultant that we've had so far, has there been any identified, I mean, you mentioned a funding plan. Could you go in a little bit into that, in terms of what the funding model would be?
Yeah, we're not there yet, because to be honest, I did not anticipate that we would see numbers that were four times what we had programmed for the project. That's really what I'm suggesting, that if, if we go forward with the full project, that that is going to be the next step that we have to do.
All right, cool. Okay. I have another question, but I'll wait until everyone's done.
Let's take one from Member Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would like to know if there is an amount that has been determined to get the capital consultant, what are, what are the fees involved? Part two of the question is, where are the fees going to be coming out of, from, out of what, what item will the fees come out of?
Sure. I have not determined that cost yet, pending some direction from the city council on which direction to go. We would circulate an RFP, you know, to the consulting folks that, and I did identify a number of firms that do this work, but I haven't reached out to them yet to get initial feedback on the scope. What we would do is we would develop a scope of work and a request for proposals. We would work that through, get some advice from the Arts Center Advisory Group on that, and then we would circulate that and get some prices from the consultants. As to where the, the source of the funding, it would come from the, the capital funds that are programmed for this project.
Member Pryforce, you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mora. During the daytime, what is the programming going to look like? Has there been any questions as we're talking about the use of the space? Is this mostly a nighttime space? Is there a daytime use? What would the daytime look, sort of look like? And what does the daytime use look like that's preferred by the, yeah, by, you know, the advisory group?
We haven't gotten very specific about that yet, but you can imagine that with the uses that are proposed, there could be classes, there could be ongoing shows, gallery, you know, open gallery hours, but events primarily, yeah, you would imagine that those, those would be in the evening time hours, particularly around the performing arts. But we haven't gotten to the point of developing programming for this, or identifying operating models for that matter.
Do we have any other clarifying questions? I actually have one. You, you mentioned that the construction costs are not included in that forty-odd-million construction cost. Oh, sorry, it was the management, construction management. Do you have an estimate, maybe ballpark, is it like 5%, 10% generally?
I would generally, in, as a capital project manager, in my past experience, I would generally budget around 15% for, for construction management, and around 3% to 5% for construction administration or design services during construction.
So we could very well be looking at a total cost exceeding $50 million just to build it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who would like to comment on the arts center topic, please come to the podium, and you'll have two minutes to speak.
My name is Rick Tejada Flores. I'm a member of the Public Arts Committee, but I'm speaking as a private individual, not the committee. I want to urge you to look at new construction as the best option. For those who remember or who haven't heard, the last time around was based on adaptive reuse, and it became evident, the more work was done, that the less suitable that approach would be. There wasn't enough space to do the things that needed, that were needed to do. There was no storage space, there was no construction space. There's a whole list of things that the building couldn't accommodate. And adaptive reuse is fine with an old building, but if you're going to put another story on it and so forth, then the adaptive reuse goes up quite a bit. So, so I think you should really give consideration to new construction. And the other comment on the capital campaign is that, maybe the capital campaign advisor will do it, but I, I, given how overworked the city staff is, it doesn't seem possible that there's manpower or resources inside the city to run the capital campaign. So I think you need to decide on someone to design the campaign and bring someone to run the campaign. And capital campaigns are long-term projects. Realistically, it can take a couple of years to raise the money, and that's relatively fast track. Those are all my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Fran Quatell. I serve on two committees in the city, and I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'm just interested in, this is a question, for accessibility and accommodation issues, which path would really be more flexible and more comprehensive? And I'd like to see that discussed if this project moves forward.
Thank you, Fran. Any other public comments?
Scott Donahue, 1420 45th Street. Do you remember a long time ago, there were two proposals that the city was looking at? One was by CAS, a group that had the idea of building above the ground floor for another use, and that these, in effect, air rights would help pay for the project. And this has been done, and like New York City, the Museum of Modern Art expanded itself by selling air rights. And at that time, one of the founders of CAS, Stephen Oliver, well-known developer in the Bay Area, thought that that approach and model would be financially successful. That seemingly would have provided the operating costs even for this arts center going forward. Should we be looking at that basic concept again, is my question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, council members. My name is Archana Horsting, and I'm one of the members of the committee that has been wrestling with these issues. I do, after looking at all the estimates that the, the architecture firm contributed, all their information is, I hope you study that carefully, because it's very helpful. And I could see the extra flexibility that the new construction gave, and I think I'm not attached to the bricks anymore, so I hope that you guys could be open to that idea. I also think there's no way we'd raise this money trying to do it as a city. We have to do it as a capital campaign. I have done capital campaigns, but I'm not in the market to do it, so, not suggesting I'd be the one, but I've done smaller ones. But you do have to have some kind of nonprofit structure, and you do really need to know the people have relationships, and that's what you're bringing in with a campaign manager who has relationships with major foundations, and it could be all across the state or even other, outside the state of California. But it is a harder pull for cities to do this than an individual nonprofit who has long-term relationships already with these people. So, but a good campaign manager would look at this, we have the land, that's another plus, that many places don't have, have a place to build. So that's one thing we don't have to buy. And also, I think eventually you have to do a real request for qualifications for the architecture firms. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Vicki Sewell, longtime citizen. Um, I think that, um, it's going to take a lot of drive to get this art center done. Years ago, we had a city manager named John Flores, who was the driving force on getting our city, um, art center done. But then redevelopment came. So now we're in a situation where we have about $10 million, and it won't probably build our art center. But we do own the land, and I think it's going to take some imagination. I think you have to think of it as making, getting housing mixed with it and having the art civic center on the first floor as the anchor tenant, and maybe even a second floor for a, um, computer science library, and then having housing above, maybe town houses, maybe affordable housing. And it's going to take more than just a nonprofit fundraising. It's going to take a lot of imagination to get this done and a lot of drive now. So, think outside of the box when you're thinking about this one. That's what I say.
Thank you, Vicki. Any other public comment?
Well, the general plans, central to the general plan is the, is the adaptive reuse concept. And every developer that comes before you doesn't want to do that. They want to tear down the existing buildings and build new. And virtually every developer is assuaged by the city council because business is king in Emeryville. But if we can't ourselves even do what we practice, what we preach, which is adaptive reuse, well, why should we expect any developers to do it? Uh, in, you know, insofar that we do, although we don't. So, why is it in the general plan? Got to remember, the general plan was vetted by the people of the city of, of Emeryville to an extraordinary degree. The people want adaptive reuse and nobody, no developer likes it. I understand that because you can make more money without it. But why is it in our plan if we have no interest in, in implementing that? And then to the idea of the art center itself, just the concept of it, I don't think there's people here in Emeryville are, can really be trusted with the aesthetic direction that this art center would take. I mean, this is a podunk town, it's, it's Mayberry. I have, I was an art major in college and I studied the, I have a degree in art and I studied the Western aesthetic canon. And, uh, so I know about art, but, and I'm an artist myself, I, I do sculpture, but I can't get into the art show here, even though I have a degree and I've been, have shown in various galleries in San Francisco. I can't get in the art show here because I'm unpopular, because I'm a critic, critic of the city council and the city hall in general. And so that tells me that you guys can't be trusted with running an art center. It's too, it's too podunk and it's too-
Thank you for your comment.
Too provincial. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Okay, I'll close public comment and we'll now discuss among the council, um, members, um, any, uh, comments or further questions? And, and maybe to guide the discussion, we can also pull up those, uh, three discussion points. Comments or questions? Member Pryforce?
I, um, uh, want to thank everyone who's been a part of, uh, this process. I don't have a art background. I am a writer, but, um, I don't have a art degree or, um, but I do have a philanthropic background. And I actually have to review about 300 different applications before, uh, before Indigenous Day, before Thanksgiving. And, uh, and these are people who are fundraising everything from, um, uh, clean water in developing economies to, uh, new ways to teach kids how to, how to code. It's very, very difficult, and it takes bold energy in order to get the kind of fundraising, finesse to make this happen. And so I applaud, uh, this community, um, for having that bold energy. Keep going. Go big. If you, if it's going to take 50 million, look, uh, from a business standpoint, and we've got some members of the business community here, um, if someone gave you 10, 11 million and said, "Well, I need you to flip it to 40, 50 million," that's nothing. That's a four, five, uh, uh, flip. And so, uh, so you have the seed capital. Use that seed capital appropriately. Make sure that our, um, that our capital fundraising consultant is someone who understands, uh, what it takes to really build the kind of entity, um, that, that this will need. And we need to build it sooner. We need to have this happen, uh, uh, much sooner, especially if you decide whether or not this is going to be a 501(c)(3) or if it's going to be fiscally sponsored. But it could be fiscally sponsored tomorrow. Just get it done. Get it started now. Um, and, uh, the new construction, I would highly recommend, um, as part of that boldness because there are going to be things that will come up. Uh, I believe that the, the 15 million, uh, the Hidden Genius Project, uh, which was an organization I helped found, uh, we have a building now in downtown Oakland. And you always want to, you were right about that 15 million. You always want to, we actually do 20 million. You know, from a business standpoint, you always want to do like 15 to 20 million, um, of expenses that, uh, that, that would blow up. And so, uh, you definitely want that new construction because you want to make sure that it's building towards, um, the exact scope of what you want to have happen. Um, especially when it comes to, as I mentioned, daytime programming and what that will look like. Uh, I remember one of my old projects, um, in my UK studies, um, was to have a, a, it was, it was a, uh, it was kind of like a, a Planet Hollywood, um, but during the daytime it was going to be a barber shop. And because it was going to be a barber shop that was, was, that was providing, uh, low-cost haircuts to kids in the community, then we were able to actually get some funding because of that. And that's just the use of it, uh, of, of how you want it to have happened in the daytime. In the daytime, if you decide that you want to, for the first time, I think, in a long time, um, have, uh, that kind of sort of educational support of a university or, um, a school facility, uh, or art school during the daytime, you, you have to mention it. So that means if, if it's going to be kids, you have to plan that, uh, plan around that. And new construction is a lot easier for that kind of flexibility. So I recommend the new, new flexibility. It, it looks like you, y'all, y'all got this. And so it, it, you, you, your instincts are right. Y'all know what y'all doing, and so I support y'all. And, uh, and, uh, and as long as I am in this seat, I am going to strive to make this art center happen. And so, uh, yeah, and if, if that means I've got to go tap some friends in, in LA, you know, some, you know, celebrities and say, "Hey, you know, I need you to come in and help me with fundraise for this," I will do it, uh, because this art center really needs to happen. And, um, and, and I only ask that you don't be distracted by any entities or anything that wants to make this into something that it should never be. So, thank you.
Member Bowthers?
Thank you, thank you. I want to thank the members of the, um, Art Advisory Committee for your work, and I know that we've had several iterations of this since 2006. You know, in 2018, we went through a very arduous process here in the community that involved the Public Art Committee, the Public Planning Commission, and other Blue Ribbon Panel was established. Um, and we came away with three proposals. A couple of them were mentioned by artists this evening. And we selected one that we were really hopeful would bring the vision to life. Um, COVID had different plans for us, unfortunately, and a lot of what we had planned was put on hold. And when we came out of COVID, um, the public-private partnership, we had envisioned the model for, um, how the pro forma would work didn't look the same. Um, cafes were not something people were flocking to build, uh, and the ability to, um, create money to manage and operate the art center was really cast into doubt under that model. And a number of changes were proposed to that prior project, um, none of which were received well by the Planning Commission or the Art Committee. And understandably, um, I think that the community, being an artist community as it has been and very committed and dedicated to the arts and the making of art in particular, um, deserves the vision it has for itself. And so to the three questions that were asked, I'll give my feedback to staff and the committee. Um, the first question was whether or not to implement the project with all of its, inclusive of all of its desired key elements. I've heard this for 10 years now, um, as a planning commissioner and a council member, and I think that we need to retain that vision for the community and not ideally, um, parse this into phases that don't really allow us to operationalize an art center. It needs to be done holistically and it needs to be done with a full vision. So I support the committee's recommendation on that. Um, the second question is, does the city council support the, um, committee's recommendation to retain the services of a capital fundraising consultant? In light of, um, the fiscal information we've been presented with, I don't see how we can't. Um, I don't think that's really, uh, it's, the fundamental question is whether do we, do we want an art center at all or not? Because the city as a capital campaign matter will not, to the points that were made by members of the public and the staff, um, be able to come up with a $40 million delta on this project in the absence of a campaign consultant for a capital campaign. And so I believe an independent capital campaign consultant for somebody or a group of people who are professionals in raising funding for the arts and art institutions needs to be, um, brought on board to do that. And the third question is, does the city council at this time have a preference as to whether the project is advanced as a new construction or adaptive reuse? In all the prior study sessions we've had on this, I've been a strong proponent for adaptive reuse because I believe it's part of the community's, um, cultural identity, not just as an artist and a maker community, but also as a historically industrial community. Um, this is the old United Stamping Company behind us here, um, that hasn't operated in decades and has sat vacant for 20 years at this point. One of the challenges that this project has is the length of time with which the vision has not been fulfilled. And I'm a pragmatist about these things. And the reality is that when you read the feasibility report, several things come out of that. Um, one is the structure's advanced decay makes retaining the structure highly unlikely, um, given that it will be a number of additional years before we have the capital to do this project. Um, but also it increases the cost of doing this project, and there is a higher level of risk. There are two types of risk I saw in the feasibility report. Page 30 makes it very clear that there is a 1.25, um, factor increase on seismic risk, uh, which is not acceptable to me when you have a gathering space of over 300 people. We're dramatically increasing seismic risk to the community for that structure. And then second is that because of the advanced decay of the materials in that structure, um, there's unforeseen construction costs with trying to ask a developer or a partner to build from the existing structure. Um, and we had, we encountered that in the last go-round. We had the partner onboard, um, identify and bring back to us issues with that. So to the question about what would provide the greatest flexibility, a clean slate at this point. But I want to make a point that I just want to leave with the committee and with the council and the community going forward. Even if I don't think at this point the building can be retained, I believe that it's worthwhile to retain some of the materials from the building. I think it's very important to retain some of the brickwork. Um, I don't know where the city would store that, to be honest. I think that's something that could be examined in the process. But I think that it would be, um, relevant and important for us to, um, do something that place makes and place keeps the identity of that facility as a longstanding industrial partner of this town. Um, and I think retaining some of the brick to perhaps be reused for a facade, um, to be made part of a art wall or a community focus area or the, the entryway to a gallery or a, or a patio. I think it's an opportunity for us to not wholesale abandon the identity of the space, um, but be pragmatist about its use going forward. So I support new construction at this time, um, with a, a lens on finding ways to either replicate some of the architectural components of the building or use the pieces that are in it for future development.
Thank you, Member Bowthers. I'd like to share my, uh, oh, sorry, Member, um, Mayor Welch, please go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to echo some of the comments Member Bowthers made. Um, definitely agree with acquiring a fundraising consultant. I believe that will help us move faster and help get this project, uh, closer to completion. Obviously taking some time, and I believe having a dedicated consultant to help navigate through the capital campaign, um, and, uh, will assist with some of the timeline issues that we've been dealing with. And then definitely agree with, um, retaining, attempting to retain the structure does, it will increase the cost. And going through that preparation to attempt to maintain the structure, again, adds to the timeline and the cost. So I agree with, uh, Member Bowthers with definitely maintaining some of the materials. I'm quite fond of the brick myself, but it does appear that the best bet moving forward would be new construction. And so those were just my comments on the matter.
Thank you, Mayor Welch. Uh, I just wanted to share my perspective. Summarizing, it, it actually looks like, uh, everyone who's spoken on the council is i- in favor of the comprehensive project, uh, new construction. Uh, both of those points seem to ensure that we don't compromise the vision of, of the art center. Uh, the, the only thing worse than no art center is a, uh, an underdeveloped one that doesn't see use. Uh, and then, uh, it definitely makes sense to retain the capital funding consultant. As Member Bowthers said, uh, this doesn't happen, uh, without that. Uh, one thing I'd like to ask this, uh, body for is, uh, to maybe concur on some additional direction to the capital consultant. Obviously, everything should be on the table, but we, we heard comments about, uh, you know, getting creative, you know, what's the city bringing to this? We're bringing a little bit of money, we're bringing the land, uh, we're adjacent to city hall. Uh, does there exist a, a project that can, um, you know, offset the costs of the art center with housing at almost, you know, let's consider any density, uh, affordable, market rate, whatever it takes. Uh, maybe we combine, um, use, build a parking structure where the city's parking lot is for a, a joint structure to allow more room for the art center and for this housing. Uh, there's a lot of opportunity here to potentially offset the costs, both the construction costs, which is significant, and the operating costs. Uh, so I, I would like to see, uh, I'd like to ask the council if they would support some direction to the capital consultant, uh, to take those points that I just made into consideration, uh, so that we don't take anything off the table. So, uh, if they come back with an answer on feasibility or cost, we'll know that we truly did explore every option and we didn't try to compromise it with, uh, whether it's retaining too much of the old structure or, uh, some, some other aspect that might be nice to have. Uh, I, I think that's the only way that we actually get this built. So maybe with a show of hands, oh, uh, Member Carr, your comment?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I just wanted the opportunity to, uh, express my viewpoint on, uh, the discussion questions. Uh, as far as implementing a comprehensive project, I have always wanted to be an art center and more. Uh, so yes, I'm satisfied with that with regard to, uh, retaining a capital fundraising consultant for support. The only thing I would want to know is, um, I think the Chad, Chad mentioned that we could go ahead and get the RFPs out, so I just wanted to know an estimate of the cost. Uh, I, I am for that idea because I do not believe that we progress without it. Uh, with regard to new construction and adaptive reuse, new construction gives us better flexibility to do a implement- to do a implement, to do an implementation of a comprehensive project. So I think that makes much more sense. With regard to your question about, with a show of hands, we support, we need to determine what our direction to be to the capital fundraising consultant. I think once, yeah, we, we could, we could do that, but maybe we could use another study session for our direction, or we could do it now. I, I'm satisfied either way.
Thank you, Member Carr. Member Bowthers?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. With respect to your additional question about flexibility on a capital campaign for other funding, I would, I would answer it in two parts. One, I recognize the difficulty of financing housing in and of itself. It takes multiple years to finance affordable housing in particular with the way state and federal tax credits are set up. So it could actually add costs to the project, so we have to be mindful of that. I don't think it's a problem to explore it. And I know that Cast was a proponent of that model in 2018. I do think it offers an opportunity to bring other life to a center. I would note that last year, California was the first state to pass a bill that was signed into law. It was Assembly Bill 812. And 812 gave any cultural art district as identified and recognized by the California Arts Council, for which Rotten City District here in Emeryville is one, the ability to set aside 10% of any affordable housing as dedicated to local artists. And we signed a letter of support for that bill. So if the city does decide in the future that marrying the vision of the art center with some component of affordable housing is worthwhile, I would just really strongly implore the future city council to include making that housing explicitly available for local artists who can then be retained in the community. And I would note also that Measure C, which was passed in 2018 by Emeryville's voters, specifically enumerates housing for artists as an eligible expense. So I believe that you can actually leverage and attract state tax credit financing by putting some small amount of Measure C funding towards a contribution towards housing component at an art center. So I do believe there are ways to finance that, which may not create new fiscal challenges for the project, but I would just really encourage that the capital consultant be focused on delivering the art center. And that parallel to that, you give direction to staff to examine the ways in which you might also finance and deliver a affordable housing project, because in most circumstances, they have to be parceled separately in order to be financed with tax credits.
Thank you, Member Bowthers. Staff, have you received enough direction from the council?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, we have one more comment from Member Pryforce.
So when President Kennedy issued the challenge that we all know as the moonshot, that in his speech, he said, "We are going to send, you know, a, a man to the moon and bring him back safely." And from a design standpoint, that meant that we weren't just going to send someone to the moon. That's not just the charge, but as a country, as America, we're going to make sure that that person gets back safely. And so then there were parameters to the project itself. And in design thinking, you always have to think about what are the parameters? Like, what is, what is the things that we cannot do? And I think that the conversation with the, with this, this consultant and with our advisory group is, what is this not? Not just what, what this will be. And, and I think it's really important because if this becomes a state-city project and it becomes, in my, in my, in my words, corporatized, then it becomes a convention center, it becomes like this, this thing, as opposed to an actual art center. And the way that a lot of funding works out in, in the private sector is that donors don't like mission drift. And they can tell when a project is moving in a direction that they feel where it loses its authenticity. And so art donors donate to art. They donate to art centers. And, and then any, any drift from that, we, you, you lose them. And, and that's, that's something that's really important. That's what I'm going to be looking at in, in terms of these applications. I'm going to be looking at the mission drift of these founders as to whether or not they're trying to do a whole lot of things at once. If they're trying to do a whole lot of things at once, other than really focusing on their minimal viable project, uh, product, then, then it, more than likely, I'm going to give it a C or a D grade. And I think that, that as we're having this conversation with this consultant, and they're having a conversation with you, that we talk about what we want this to be, and that's one of the reasons why the 513, you know, that's the entity, because then you have to establish what your mission is, your board is, and that sort of thing. And that keeps it from, you know, teetering in all these different directions, because from what, from what I know, that's one of the reasons why it's taken this long, is because it keeps teetering and that sort of thing. And then you have a new council, and then someone says, "Well, maybe we should make it this, and maybe we should make..." And then it changes, it keeps changing, it keeps changing, and then it just takes forever. And I think that it's really important that, that we stay the course, but that course is be, is being defined by this community. And so, so I'm going to be really interested when we do talk to this consultant as to not just what this project is, but what this project isn't. And that once that's defined, then there's no more of us drawing out, to use an artist's term, drawing outside the lines unless you, you want to.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. So I, I think we've provided the needed direction. With no further agenda items, I'll adjourn this meeting. The time is 7:41. The time is 7:41. This is a meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville. I'd like to note that members present are still seated, and we still have Mayor Welch and a Member Carr attending via just cause exception provided by AB 2449. Are we required to take roll again, or is that sufficient? Madam Clerk?
That's fine, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time to approve the final agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
The final agenda is approved. Do we have any ex parte communications?
None to report.
Seeing and hearing none. I'll now open, now is the time for public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any members of the public who would like to make public comment, please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes.
So I'm now filming Councilmember Bowthers, and you'll see his eyes are down. Vice Mayor Mora's eyes are not down. Councilmember Pryforce's eyes are not down, but Councilmember Bowthers' eyes are down. Then to, now I alert everybody to the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct that was certified by Councilmember Bowthers. And it says here, "Practice active listening." He is compelled to do this. C. Active listening is being fully engaged while another person is speaking. Now he's doing it, now that I'm quoting this. "It is listening with the intent to understand the other person fully rather than listening to respond. Members should use nonverbal cues that show understanding such as nodding or eye contact." Okay? Every time I come up here, Bowthers, Welch, Carr, they're not in the chambers now, so we can't see where their eyes are, but Bowthers, every time I come here, except for right now, Councilmember Bowthers' eyes are not on me, the speaker. Well, that's a violation of the, the Code of Conduct. I didn't write the Code of Conduct. The city attorney did. But you, Councilmember Bowthers, you certified it. This is your document. This is your document. So I mean, I think it's reprehensible that you can't abide by your own document. So I, I suggest that you redo the Code of Ethics and get rid of the C. Practice active listening. Now, of course, you're watching, you're looking at me now, but that's just for the cameras.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members? Welcome.
I'm Vicki Sewell. I'm here for ECAP, Emeryville Citizens Assistant Program. We're going to have our holiday dinner drive, December 28th, at the high school at ECL. And we could use volunteers, but we're also having a blue jean drive. And I was wondering if we could have a box for blue jeans at the City Hall. We're having one at the senior center, but if we can have a box for people to leave clean, used blue jeans or jackets for the unhoused, I'll come and pick them up every day. But just need your permission.
I'm sure we can work something out. Thank you, Vicki. Any other members of the public? If not, we'll move to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved. We have no action items, and I'll adjourn the meeting. The time is 7:46. The time is 7:46. This is the regular meeting of the Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at 133 Park Avenue, Emeryville, California. I'd like to note that Members Bowthers and Pryforce are still seated, and we have Mayor Welch and Member Carr attending with just cause exception provided by AB 2449. So there will be no need for the roll call. Next, we have the approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
We have no special orders of the day. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcement of commission or committee vacancies?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Wanted to let you know, you and the council members know that Sharice Duckworth resigned from the Housing Committee this last week. Thank you.
Next is the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. No report from the city manager's office tonight.
Do we have any ex parte communications on any of the consent items or action items on this agenda?
None here.
Member Bowthers?
Yes, I've received email communications from a Mr. Goldlust regarding item 12.2. I have also received communications from members of Butner Properties and the folks who own the Bone Motif and Rug Depot buildings, and met with them regarding item 12.5.
Member Pryforce?
I've also met with similar entities concerning the business occupants of Watch Street and, yeah, along, along the 40th Street, those who are affected by the 40th Street multimodal project.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Welch.
I too have received communication from Mr. Goldlust and also from Butner Properties as well.
Member Carr?
I'm sorry, likewise.
And I also received the same communications in question. Next, we have public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment? Please come to the podium. Please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Okay, the mayor, Courtney Welsh, since she's been mayor, she's called me a fuckboy. And then she called me a racist. Yeah, she's shaking her head, but it's true. She called me a fuckboy. She called me a racist. She's called me a misogynist recently, and then she called me a liar recently. But we have the Code of Ethics, and the Code of Ethics that is certified by Councilmember or Mayor Welch and the rest of the council members, says you can't do that. Who agrees with me? The city manager or the city attorney says you can't be calling people names in your capacity as a council member. She's rolling her eyes now at all these theatrics coming from the mayor right now. If you turn around, you'll see it. Lot of theatrics, lot of bombast. She's got her, her microphone off. But it says, "The professional and personal conduct of members must be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members, the public, and staff." I'm a member of the public. So, okay, personal, professional, personal conduct above reproach. Fuckboy, liar, misogynist, and racist, calling people that is not above reproach. That's expressly prohibited by our Code of Ethics that you, Mayor Welch, certified. So what do we do about this? Are, are you going to be, are you going to hold yourself to account? Or are we, are we just SOL? We're shit out of luck. Yeah, she just says, she's saying shit out of luck. You can, if you watch her on the screen right now, she's saying shit out of luck. So, but I say, I'm crying foul. No, this document means more than zero. So we, if, if a council member is violating, and there's a section here that says what should happen if a council member violates this, and that is censure by the other council members.
Thank you for your comment.
That's what we need, censure.
Any other members of the public for items not on the agenda? We'll have a public comment section for that item.
You're allowed to speak now if you want.
You are permitted to speak. Moving on to the consent items, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
The consent items are approved. Next, we have no public hearings, and we have action items, the first of which is 12.1. This is a resolution of the City Council of Emeryville approving an agreement of employment between the City of Emeryville and the Tanya Bello as city manager and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement on behalf of the city. Do we have a staff report? Or there's no, there's no staff presentation, so any questions?
I'm looking for Lily Bell. I don't know if, here she is.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I wanted to introduce tonight LaTanya Bello, who is being presented with an offer and, or for the city manager position. Sorry, wasn't prepared to do a presentation tonight. So I prepared the staff report, and here if you had any questions. I apologize.
Thank you, Lily Bell. Do we have any questions about this item from council? Seeing no questions, we'll now take public comment. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to make a two-minute comment? Please come to the podium.
Okay, we, the people of Emeryville, have a remedy when the councilmembers bully us. We have a remedy, and it's, the remedy is spelled out in the Code of Ethics that the five councilmembers certified. And the remedy is, we make complaints against councilmembers that bully us and that violate the code, and then you censure those councilmembers. But you're not doing it with Mayor Welch. Even though she called me a fuckboy and a liar and a racist and a misogynist, clearly against the, what the city attorney said that, that's beyond reproach. That is not, you're not supposed to do that if you're on the council. You're not supposed to be calling people names, even on your Twitter account. And yet, that's what the mayor has been doing. So I'm gonna be bringing this up every meeting from now on until you let me know. At least deliver to me a response to my complaint that I issued with the five of you that I want you to redress, to do an investigation on this. And barring any notice from the City of Emeryville acknowledging my complaint, it's gonna be fuckboy, 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 directed at Courtney Welch every meeting until, you know, until you... She's dissed at a thumbs up, so she wants to hear it. She likes it. I'm fine with it too, Courtney. But anyway, so that's where we're gonna go from now on until, you know, you acknowledge that I made a complaint and you tell me what you're gonna do to rectify the situation. Because it's not my opinion that she violated the Code of Ethics. It's the city attorney's opinion that she violated the Code of Ethics. So, there you go.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments for item 12.1? I'd like to bring this back to council for discussion. Members? Member Bauders?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The most important function that any city council has, in my experience and my time on the city council, is hiring the people who work for you the closest, the city manager and the city attorney. This city has enjoyed, for many years, a very strong relationship between its city council and its city manager. And the function of city manager in a small city is different than it is in larger cities. It's a very intimate experience, working with the people who run the departments in this community, who are closest to the staff that do the day-to-day work and are responsive to the members of our community who rely on the city for the services they enjoy. Public meetings aren't always the prettiest experience. And I just wanna welcome Ms. Bello to the City of Emeryville. You are a seasoned professional in the space of city administration. And so I know that the theatrics of public meetings don't put you off, because you wouldn't be here were that the case. I just wanna confer upon the public that I've had the opportunity to do this process three times now in my time on the city council, and each time we find a different type of leader, a person who brings their own lived experience, professional development, and unique perspective and skillset to the city. And my hope for the City of Emeryville going forward is that you will bring all those skills and gifts you have and the experience you've leveraged from your time in city administration to this community, and that it will be a fruitful partnership between you and the staff and the community. And I look forward to all the good things that you'll do for us as the city manager. So I just wanna welcome you and congratulate you on making it to this point in your career and choosing this city to be a place that hopefully you will call home, even if it's in a workspace. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bauders. Mayor Welch?
You, Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want to welcome LaTanya to Team Emeryville. Appreciated getting to know her over the interview process, displaying her ability to be innovative, to be flexible, and just really connecting with council and staff during that process. And I look forward to working with her. We're going through, obviously, a period of transition, and we have challenges that we are facing as a city. But I have complete confidence in her, in her ability to help be a driving force as we address those challenges and come out on the other side. And, yeah, just look forward to working with her moving forward. And just to echo the comments, thank you for choosing Team Emeryville, and I look forward to a very fruitful working relationship.
Thank you, Mayor Welch. Any other member comment? A member Carr?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I echo the comments of my colleagues in welcoming LaTanya Bello. I am very excited that you are joining the city, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Member Carr. I just wanted to note as well that echoing what Member Bauders said, this is one of the most important decisions that a city council makes. And this being my first experience going through the process, it was a very rigorous and competitive process. We received nearly 50 applications. We had multiple rounds of interviews. And I'm very confident in our decision to proceed with Mrs. Bello. So thanks for coming today. Member Pryforce?
I don't usually do scripts. The circumstances that lead to this vote that I will be making bear a heavy burden. On one end, an accomplished woman of color, black woman, who comes to this position with a background and hope that city staff have considered to be the best match to become our new city manager. You also come with support from those I consider friends, who value my remarks and efforts to speak on behalf of those in Emeryville struggling to keep this city as their home. On the other hand, is my unfortunate experience of only being partially involved in this hiring process. The first round of interviews, I found them to be unfair and saddled with bias. Because I am bound to keep closed sessions matters private, what I can reveal was that the yelling and screaming that was directed towards me by a colleague made it too uncomfortable for me to proceed further. Since then, I have chosen to no longer sit at the same table with that colleague during closed sessions until I can be assured that it no longer happens again. The bullying must end, and I am determined to end it by any means necessary. I find that process to be unfair, and fairness matters to me. This is the atmosphere you are walking into that has increasingly been met with public scrutiny. And though we are in Berkeley, Emeryville politics has its own share of drama that you shouldn't be judged over and for. My criteria for city manager was contingent on three factors. If a member of our community is being evicted or their business is being threatened with closure, can they rely on their city manager to listen? In a city of 13,000, there is no excuse not to. Improving the communication from the people, by the people, from City Hall and by City Hall makes for a rewarding relationship that feels closer to what this city strives to be. The old ways of working have not worked. Let's embrace something new and better. We are encountering financial hardships as a city. You wouldn't be here if we couldn't help you at least pay some of your bills. Our city is in need of leadership that can help us through trying times. Lastly, a great sense of community. As you can see, we have a rich assortment of characters and competing interests in Emeryville, being nestled between two great cities. But what makes us great isn't our city size, it's our ability to take care of one another and know one another. We make a mistake, we repair, and put our best foot forward. I haven't had the time to assess if you meet all three of those benchmarks. But as I was reminded recently, a lot of people trust in my discernment to call it out when you don't and to call you in when I know you can. So this is me calling you in and placing my trust in the people's seat that I occupy in eventually voting yes to your joining the Emeryville family. May your better angels guide you, and please take care of yourself as you take care of our city. These are my remarks.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. I'd like to invite LaTanya to give a few words.
Wow. Thank you so much for those heartfelt words. My name is LaTanya Bello. Good evening to the Mayor Welch, to Vice Mayor Mora, and to the city council, to the members of the public, and to the city staff that are present. I wanna thank you all for your trust in me. I do think, as you've indicated, it is a two-way. And I appreciate the trust that you've instilled in me. I am super excited. There's not much that has occurred tonight that would scare me off. I do have quite a bit of experience in other settings, and so things will be fine. I appreciate what's happening here. I appreciate the diversity, the call for inclusivity, the transparency, and the let's work together to get this done. So what you will have from me is my commitment, that my values is that I will be leading this organization with transparency, with integrity, and with collaboration, plus a little fun. I do like to have a little fun here and there. That way I can stay healthy, as you have identified. And so I look forward to meeting the members of this community, whether it's through city events. I heard some great ones here tonight, through neighborhood forums, or just through some of the initiatives that we will work on together. I look forward to getting to know each and every one of you. And again, I thank you all for putting your trust in me, because this is a very important decision. And I look forward to continuing to work with you all on your successes and continuing to build those and tackling those challenges that you all have identified, which we know financial certainly is one of them, and we gotta get that art center built, is what I heard tonight. But you have in me a very committed, experienced, public servant, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, LaTanya. Welcome to Emeryville. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce? Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Welcome to Emeryville. Next, we have item 12.2, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, selecting the proposal from SuJia Chen of SuJia Chen Studio for the 40th Street Streetscape Project.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm Amber Evans, Community Development Coordinator, and I bring to you the recommendation from the selection panel and the Public Art Committee to award the 40th Streetscape Public Art Contract tonight. If I can see the next slide, please. These were all the five finalists. The project scope, just for remembrance to the council and the public, has, this is public art for the 40th Street project that would include outreach to the community to understand what public imagery, key community attributes, definitive symbols to represent in the wayfinding along that project. If it's successful, perhaps it would be considered integration into our full wayfinding program throughout the city. The project is creating four plazas, the 40th Streetscape Project. So the public art is proposed for one sculpture in each plaza created. And then a requirement of the call was that at least 12 pieces be located in the streetscape between Adeline and the South Bay Front Bridge Plaza. Next slide, please. Members of the community, outside art professionals, members of the PAC, and city staff were convened, as is practice in the selection of public art, and reviewed 45 applications. So enumerating them to come to 15 semifinalists. Of those, they met, discussed, and reviewed the work of, and selected five finalists who you as a body endorsed for conceptual design proposals or authorized those. Those five finalists provided a technical draft in August, and then they were advised to provide final proposals that were received by August 22nd. Next slide, please. Upon receiving those, we had, we went to the Rotten City Cultural District Black Party and had the public review all of the proposals. As you may have seen, as you've entered into the council, they've been on display for the last two weeks. We then convened the panel. The panel interviewed all five of the finalists and made recommendation of CJ Chen. Surveys were continued to be received through September 11th so that they could, comments could be received up until the PAC was convened on September 12th. The PAC considered the surveys, the selection panel, public comment, and they also made recommendation of the selection of CJ Chen. I'm here before you tonight reviewing all the material, the slides that I'll show you of the various work and their comparison for your consideration of this recommendation. Next slide, please. Five teams, many of them made up of multiple artists, were proposing and had different elements of those teams, two from Oregon, two from LA, and one from the Bay Area. Next slide, please. The first I'm presenting here, just to give an orientation to what was being compared, Addie Boswell had a total of 24 elements. Her work was noted for its creativity. There was some questions about proof of concept, being able to implement it. And it had a smaller streetscape element that it would be located within. Next slide, please. Urban Rock had a broader streetscape it was proposing works within, but a limited number of works to be installed, and there was concern about graffiti on the elements. Next slide, please. The recommended work was noted for having a consistent theme throughout it. While it had a shorter streetscape, it had a lower budget, and the artists indicated they were open to expanding that scope. And in the contract before you tonight, this initial proposal has been expanded and had elements on a variety of different elements, including bus shelter, roof attachments, screens, lean poles, fences, and was appreciated for its originality in the different elements to be expanded through the project. Next slide, and it went from Emory to Hubbard, but it's now been expanded. Scott Donahue's team was three artists from here in the Bay Area, had the entire scope, as did one of... had the entire scope, as did one other team, but the smallest number of elements. And there were different elements proposed in each different plaza, so there was a question about the unity of the theme. Next slide, please. And then Pete Goldlust had a proposal that went from the full project, many elements. But there were questions that were raised about giving credit to the artist that did the initial mudflat work. And that was raised as a concern within the selection panel. Next slide, please. Each of the elements that were proposed on included an icon. Here's an example from each of the teams. And circle is the—one of many different options offered by CJ Chen that she would explore through a advanced—a community process that I'll discuss in a little bit. Next slide, please. That process is to work with the community in a series of workshops, doing paper cut installations. People can submit—she'll also have a website where she'll be asking people to submit their images and answering questions about what represents Emeryville for them. This proposal, along with that of Goldlust, were considered the most robust. A Goldlust proposal included having a mudflat week and having people express and celebrate the prior mudflat installations. The other two were not as robust. Next slide, please. Each of the teams proposed an element to be in series, attached to the light poles, and examples are shown here. Next slide, please. And all the proposals submitted at least four sculptures, one in each plaza. Some had great variability in what was within them. Some included light, some had functional elements. And CJ Chen's work was noted for its consistency in aesthetic throughout the places while having some works that had light, perhaps where most needed, some works that were interactive, where play might be anticipated, and some works that were functional, such as seating, and thinking about moving those around for where they're most needed. Next slide, please. The selection panel interviewed each team, and afterwards, three of the five panelists endorsed CJ Chen and no other applicants. Two of the others recommended another artist, either Scott Donahue or Pete Goldlust. But as all five endorsed CJ Chen, he was recommended for the PAC's consideration. Next slide, please. The PAC took this recommendation, listened to the public comment that they received, and made recommendation to move forward with a contract for CJ Chen for all elements of the project. There had been some consideration of would any of the teams be married or separate—you know, two teams working together. They did not—at no point did anyone recommend this. They did think that one response to the concerns that were raised was that you be—as a body—provided all of the elements that were supplementally provided with the applicants be provided to you. So in your packet tonight, you were, per that recommendation, given all of the materials from each of the applicants. Next slide, please. And these are just examples of—actually, if you could go back one second, sorry. Sorry to do that to you. These are just examples of the additional elements that were proposed by CJ Chen in bus shelters, on bus shelters, and on lean posts. That's a variety of installations that were not found in other proposals. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the next steps, if you take the action tonight, would be for the artists to engage in the icon development, the community outreach for the wayfinding. And we would expect to do that in the new year, beginning that work. And this allows the city to incorporate that design process into the wayfinding in advance of the project—the Fortieth Street project. The artists would go to the BPAC and the Public Art Committees for that feedback. The design of the logo and the elements would be placed in the wayfinding and thematic elements of the bus stops, streets, and plaza elements. Those public paper cutting workshops that I was talking about would include the teaching of techniques and would provide feedback for these elements. And then a website would be initiated. The artist has called her proposal "The Life Cycles", and she'd be asking for those elements that people felt were necessary to represent Emeryville. And then post that design, we're expecting the artists will probably go on hiatus, pending the funding of Fortieth Street multimodal—the multimodal project, with the fabrication and installation of the Streetscape and Plaza artworks consistent with the timing of the funding and construction of the Fortieth Street multimodal project. That is the conclusion of my presentation, and the ask of you tonight is to approve—the contract with CJ Chen Studios. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Do we have any questions from council? Any clarifying questions? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The material with Chen's work, is it—is it see-through? Like, does light actually go in, or?
She will be laser cutting the metal works, and therefore there will be transparency. So for example, one of the interactive pieces, there's two laser cut pieces in front of the other, so different designs will appear behind them. The bus shelter—the intention is to put in an element that would have transparency in some elements of that.
So with the bus shelter particularly, if I—behind me, would someone be able to—would I be able to look behind me and kind of get a feeling of—that if I—I guess I'm trying to— Would I be able to see someone behind me? Yeah, I think that that—yeah, because I'm thinking safety reasons, because unfortunately, we have some characters there.
Understanding the question, I believe, is there—is there enough opacity so someone sitting can understand if someone's behind them? I believe, as proposed, that exists. I think because this is a process that will have significant public input with public workshops, that that can be a discussion about what is needed within our bus shelters. Does that get opened up a little bit more? How are we responsive to any concerns about safety? There aren't too many locations where that back element is, and that could be rethought if we needed different elements within this. They are touching streetscape elements in a variety of different ways and along the theme, so that that could be modified, and staying within the budget.
Any other questions? If not, let's proceed to public comment. Members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Hi there. I'm Sam Gould. I'm a resident of the Park Avenue District. I live a couple blocks from this project. I am speaking in support of CJ Chen's work. We—my wife and I came across the proposal at the Rotten City Cultural District event held at Bay Street. And we were so excited, as residents of this neighborhood, for the new pocket parks along Fortieth Street to really bring life to this corridor, because Fortieth Street doesn't really have much green space along it. And having elements that bring play into it, like interactive elements with seating, with lights, that invite the user to like participate with the environment, I think is really important to our neighborhood. So I would really love to see this approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing—oh, Vicki.
So I was on this committee, and I was—I'm on the PAC. And we took a long time to discuss the theme of this, what was going to happen along Fortieth. And we wanted to bring nature into this little urban setting that's kind of industrial, and is planted a little bit. But I think this artist will catch it. I think this artist will make it colorful, make it for all ages, and make the experience of riding the bus a little bit more cheerful, I think. And the trail will lead us—lead from Fortieth all the way to the Marina, which is our best view. So I think it's a good project. I think it's going to be—it's—I'm sad that it's going to take so long to come, because that Fortieth isn't funded yet. But yeah, we'll see.
Thank you, Vicki. Any other members of the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Members? I've got one comment. I just wanted to note—I really seeing seeing those sculptures, the artwork, I did really enjoy the colorful and playful nature. And I feel like it really dovetails well into the vision of the city that we are looking to move in. So I'm very appreciative of the—the artists who submitted for this project. I'm very excited by the recommendation, and I'm also very grateful to staff for the work coordinating this effort. Member Bowders?
I want to thank the members of the panel of people who did the work. This is a lot of work. It's a lot of work to review this much material. I want to thank the artists who were contracted with, the five of them, who have an immense amount of talent. And I think you had a very difficult challenge in discerning and finding something that was thematically consistent across the corridor but invited different elements of art and engagement into the community. And very happy with the panel that was selected of people to do that work and the broad range of experience and skills they bring to that medium and that profession. And I think that the proposal we have here is one that will create an identity for this corridor, I think, and as it undergoes transformation into a more people-oriented space, I think it will really partner with that vision well. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the committee.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 12.4 is the 2024-25 Fiscal Year Budget Update and Proposed Budget Strategies.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Mora, we skipped over item 12.3.
Oh, apologies. 12.3, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, Approving and Accepting the Emeryville Police Department's 2024 Annual Military Equipment Use Report. If it's amenable to the council, I'd like to propose waiving presentation. Are there any objections to waiving the presentation? Seeing no objections. Do we have a motion to— Do we have any questions from council? Seeing no questions, I'll open this to public comment. Any members of the public who'd like to comment on item 12.3? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowders. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 12.4, 2024-25 Fiscal Year Budget Update and Proposed Budget Strategies.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me, my name's Brian Mora. I'm a financial consultant working with the city, and I'm also working for regional government services. And I wanted to acknowledge, before I start, the other team members who worked with me on this project, which included Lily Bell, your acting finance director, the city manager, the assistant city manager, and Peggy in accounting. So tonight, we're going to bring forward to you a fiscal year budget update for the year 2024-25, and talk about some proposed budget strategies. Next slide. So to give you a quick background on budgeting in Emeryville, Emeryville has a biannual, two-year budget. That process includes adopting budgets for the general fund, the non-general funds, and capital budgets. At this point, we're midway through that two-year cycle, and so it's time for an update. And we're—as the slide suggests, we're in the so-called 2023-25 budget. And actually, the next—your next two-year budget is going to be—works beginning on that next month with a budget calendar and instruction memo to city departments, and that's already underway. Next slide. So we're going to start with some budget updates. Next slide. In 2024-25, we talked to you about the general fund, which is the general operating fund of the city. This is where your ongoing services, like police, fire, public works, et cetera, are funded. If we go back one step, as far as looking at last year's budget, 2023-24, general fund expenses will exceed revenues by about $7.7 million. These were offset somewhat by salary savings due to some vacant positions. And you see, we have a table here that compared some of the key revenues where there was a reduction to the prior year, the 2022-23 year. Next slide. In terms of this fiscal year, 2024-25, we're projecting an $11.8 million shortfall, including a decline in revenues of $5.5 million and an increase in expenses of $6.3 million. What that amounts to is that the general fund reserves decreased from $50.7 million to $45.2 million during this fiscal year. And you see on the table below some of the key revenues that are in decline, and the amount. And if we go to the next slide, we see that there are fewer increasing revenues, including the utility user tech investments and a couple of other items. Next slide. We also show here the ongoing expenditure increases. There are a couple categories: salaries and benefits, your CalPERS retirement costs, and social security taxes. And then we have some one-time expenditure increases, namely the social security settlement, which at this point is estimated at around $3 million, and then the bargaining unit's lump sum payment of $350,000. Next slide. So now we move on to budget strategies, and this is going to be a series of items that were presented to your Budget and Governance Committee, and now we're presenting them to you tonight. The first is the Long Range Financial Plan. This is part of your annual two-year budget process. It's prepared by the city staff, and it provides a five-year projections of revenues and expenses. The recommendation is that we continue that process either with staff or, in theory, it could be done by contract. The next item is to consider updating the city's cost allocation plan and your master fee schedule. This—this has not been done for about eight years now in the city. Best practice, in my experience, is to do this every five years. So this is something that's overdue, I think, in this community. It's also worth noting that in your budget, in your general fund, that development fees are a major component of your revenue picture. If the city were to move forward with this, the cost of such a project would be about $60,000 to $80,000, probably take about six to nine months to complete. Next slide. The next item that was proposed for review was to talk about revising, on a temporary basis, the city's use policy for using residual property tax revenues. Right now, half of those revenues are allocated to the general fund, and then the balance are allocated to other funds. And in the current year, that revenue source is estimated at $6.4 million. Currently, half of that, or $3.2 million, is going to the general fund. And in this budget strategy, the suggestion is to divert the remaining $3.2 million to the general fund to reduce the shortfall. Next slide. And then there was also a discussion with the Budget and Governance Committee about potential revenue measures. I did note in the report and on this slide that because revenue measures have to be adopted at a general election, that would mean that these would have to go before the voters two years from now in November of 2026. Some key things to be aware of. First of all, the cost to put a measure on the ballot between the costs with the county and also costs for— between the costs with the county and also costs for outreach and polling would be something in the neighborhood of $150,000. And some of the options that were discussed with the committee included increasing the local transaction and use, what some people call, sales tax by a quarter of a percent, which would generate $2.4 million a year, and also some other taxes. And you'll notice in the report and in the PowerPoint, we've added information about when these taxes were adopted and also when they were updated, which was a request from the members of the committee. Depending on the provisions of these measures, they could raise between half a million and $900,000 per year each. That would be the hotel tax. Some of the others, as I note, would require some additional study to fine-tune exactly what they would bring in. Next slide. And then there's a couple of options in the area of expenditure control. One would be to evaluate vacant positions, and we've listed here some positions that were vacant when this report was repaired to the, presented, excuse me, to the commission, to the committee, and that was in excess of a million dollars there. And then B, to take a look at a 2.5% reduction in the budget of nonessential expenses, which could bring in $1.5 million. Next slide. So here are the recommendations from your Budget and Governance Committee. They looked at the report that was printed to them in August and then again in October and made some fine tuning. What they're recommending to you is to go ahead with the general fund allocation of the residual property tax revenues to 100% on a temporary basis to bring in $3.2 million. To evaluate the vacant positions, they also added an additional tweak here to also evaluate contracts and look at, there could be a savings of a million dollars. They're recommending moving ahead with the 2.5% reduction in nonessential operating costs for $1.5 million. The fourth recommendation is to transfer amount from the, excuse me, the economic uncertainty reserve to pay for the social security settlement, which is estimated at around $3 million, and to replenish that fund within three years. And then finally, to use $3 million from the unassigned fund balance to bridge the 24-25 fiscal year shortfall. And they also noted that if the social security settlement comes in at more than $3 million, they would also recommend that the balance of that settlement also come from the unassigned fund balance. Next slide. Some additional information and recommendations. First off, the Budget and Governance Committee expressed interest in further exploring revenue options, which is described in your staff report as item D on page five at their December meeting. Second, after some further analysis by the city staff of their recommendations, they're proposing some adjustments in the vacant positions list. One would be to underfill the management analyst role in the managers department, and the other would be to recruit one of the two vacant senior inspector positions in the building division, which would then allow them to eliminate some contract costs, which again goes to the committee's tweak about looking at contract costs. And then finally, there's a recommendation to increase the amount of the unassigned fund balance from $3 million to $3.5 million to provide some additional flexibility as we evaluate some of the items that the committee recommended. Next slide. So with that, I'll turn it back to the Vice Mayor for questions or comments.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions from council? Any clarifying questions? Member Pryforce?
Sorry, the business license tax is, this is the same thing as our corporate tax cap?
I'd have to defer to the city manager or others.
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't, I don't believe the business license tax, and I'm looking back to you, Brian.
Okay.
And maybe Councilmember Pryforce, you can ask your question a little bit more specific on what you're asking there.
It looks like, uh, Member Bowthers may have an answer.
Looks like our friends behind me here, your director of community, next month development, may have an answer as well.
Yes, I think what you're referring to is the cap on the amount of revenues that is subject to the city's business tax. Most businesses pay one tenth of 1% of their revenues in the form of tax, not every business, but most businesses. There is, in the municipal code, a cap on the amount of revenues. It's indexed annually for inflation that are subject to that. It's a very high number, but, that I don't have right to hand right now. But yes, I think that's what you're referring to in terms of the cap.
Yeah, and I guess to add on to Chad's comment, one of the reasons that on the business license tax, for example, we did not show an estimate is given the length of time it's been since you've looked at your business license tax. What you would probably do if that was a revenue option that the city council had interest in exploring is you'd update the ordinance, because what I've found is over time, in many cities, they add categories. And so one thing you might try to do is simplify the ordinance. You might also look at the relative profitability of different businesses. Some of the recent business license tax ordinance elections I've seen, oftentimes, the city will reduce the tax burden on the less profitable businesses in their community, keep them the same in the middle, and maybe raise them in some of the more profitable businesses. To the discussion about the cap, that's another area that you might look at in terms of, would you keep the cap? Would you raise the cap? Would you take the cap off? My experience is that in addition to those kinds of questions, which result in a whole series of options that are presented first to your budget subcommittees and then ultimately to the council, it gets very complex. But also, it offers an opportunity for you to modernize the ordinance and again, make it easier to understand. I haven't really delved into yours to see what it's like, but in some of the other communities I've worked with in recent years where we've done these modernization projects, we try to make it much more easy to administer and understand for the business community.
Thank you. Because I believe the last time we updated our, our business tax, corporate tax cap was measure D in 2011, as you stated. And so it sounds like modernization is, is a great idea. The, so with the, what have you seen has happened with cities that did raise? And I believe it's from what I'm, when I can see, prior to the approval of measure D, there had been a maximum annual business tax of $117,000 somewhat per year. With the approval of measure D, the maximum rate was adjusted upward to $300,000 per year. And according to the election results, it was 80% of voters in Emeryville approved it. I mean, it was not a lot, it was about 1,000 people, but still, it's very popular. What have you seen has been the result of, for cities that have, let's say, lifted, lifted it? Let's say we don't lift, lift it all the way off, but let's say maybe doubled or, or it went up by 30, 40%.
My experience in recent years is that passing the business license tax increases or modernization, the hotel tax and the half cent or the quarter cent transactions, those are the ones that seem to be passing most successfully. When you get into some of the other tax areas that you have, for example, like the utility users tax, those tend to be much more difficult to pass, in my experience. But I think usually, the first step in the process is to engage in what, the way that you do the budgeting here, is to do your five-year projection, to take a look at, after you use some of these other budget strategies, what is the delta of the shortfall? And that also often influences which revenue source the community and the council will support. For example, I worked in one city a couple of years ago, and while there was a lot of support to raise the hotel tax in that community, it did not raise enough money to cover the gap, whereas the transactions tax did. So that's the direction they went. And I would imagine that would be part of the discussion here. But as we looked at this report, given that you can't, you know, go to the voters for two years, we're thinking that in the short term, we're probably going to have to look at some of these other budget strategies between now and then. And then probably in the summer or fall of 2025, I would imagine, would be the first point at which you'd really start to look at the projection, the gap, what revenue types you had. And typically, what you do is have like a study session with the council, lay out all the different revenue types, see what the council and the community is willing to entertain and not. And based on that, then you can begin to really do some work. Because as I said, the, if you explore the business license tax or the utility user tax is another one, there's going to be some costs to dig into them. Whereas some of the others, for example, the hotel tax, it's pretty straightforward. It's either 1% or 2%. So you're looking at either $500,000 or a million dollars a year, more or less, in revenue. So that one's easy to project. The others, more difficult. And just to talk a little bit about the utility tax, even though that is a more difficult one to pass, if you change that, there's a couple of things you could look at. Some cities will broaden the base or the number of things subject to the tax, but then they'll either keep or lower the rate. I noticed in your committee report, it talked about raising the rate, and you could certainly do that. But my experience is that that, it doesn't seem to be the trend. The trend is either to broaden the base or to lower the rate for a successful utility tax measure. Again, assuming that that's of interest to the council and it also has community support. But in my experience, in recent years, that's a really difficult one to pass. How it is here, I don't know, but that's my general experience.
Any other questions from council? If not, I'd like to open, member Pryforce?
Thank you. I was just being polite. So on one of your slides, I believe it was 11 or, no, 15 was a different one, it mentioned the different taxes, and then there was a line underneath that one that mentioned maybe, maybe some other taxes to explore. Have you explored vacancy taxes?
I'm, I'm familiar with those. I would say that in general, my experience in looking at the cities that passed them is that one's probably even more difficult than the utility user tax to pass. There are a couple of reasons why. One is, it's very difficult to explain to the community what that is, how it works. There've also been instances where in one community, they wanted to take that tax and then earmark the proceeds to put towards housing, which is a very admirable goal. But as you, some of the council members may be aware, that once you earmark taxes, now you have to have a two-thirds approval rather than a majority.
Yeah.
And, and in that community, not only did they not have two-thirds support when they did the polling, they didn't even have a majority. And part of the pollster report in that community was that people couldn't understand exactly how it worked. And you'd also have to have discussions, again, like some of the others, about, does it apply residential? Does it apply to commercial? If you're taxing on vacancies, how long would the property have to be vacant before the tax kicked in? So, you know, again, it's, if it's of interest to the council, the staff could certainly bring it to you and lay it out and, you know, show you what the different options were and how much money it might raise. But I think just to be candid going in, that would be a challenging one to, in most communities. Again, I'm not that familiar with Emeryville. Maybe it's different here, but in most places, that's, it's a high bar to pass that.
Any other questions from council? If not, I'll open this up to members of the public. If anybody from the public would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring this back for discussion. Member Bowthers?
Thank you. I want to thank you for a very comprehensive report, very well done. And as Chair of the Budget and Governance Committee, we've had a very thorough examination of the fiscal situation. I think it's important, as context, to note that the vast majority, if not almost all of the revenue shortfall is tied to the complete plateauing of lab and research and bio-life science development in the city. There's a large number of projects that had been approved, that were in the budget as having to receive licenses or permits to be pulled. And due to a combination of the cost of materials and labor and inflation and interest rates, many of those projects did not pull permits in the past fiscal year that would have generated close to $6.5 million of fees for the city's revenue. So we're in the process of making an adjustment around that. I think it's important to contextualize, that's, that's the problem we have on the table. And I think that this is, when you're in a situation like that, it's really important. We've done this, we did this in 2017 with the dip in the recession. We did this in 2020, 21 with COVID. It's really important to develop a strategy to bridge to the other side of the fiscal challenge. And that this is, the, the steps outlined in the staff report, these five strategies related to reprioritizing residual property tax revenues, vacant positions, nonessential operating contact, contracts, some economic uncertainty reserve, and some unassigned fund balance. That is a prudent and a tested strategy in the city for bridging us to the other side of a fiscal challenge. And I think that it's important and imperative for us, as the committee gave direction to do, to have an early conversation about revenues. And I agree with a vast majority of what you said about revenues. I think voters are loath right now to approve things like utility users tax at the same time that PG&E has jacked up rates on them. There's, you know, it, it looks good on paper, that could generate a certain amount of money, but the political side of asking people who have just been told by PG&E to pay a lot more money to pay a higher tax that benefits the city is not going to be very well received. Similarly, there's a balance to be had in examining things like the business license tax. I think it's healthy to look at something like that that hasn't been touched in a long time, but to recognize the regional ecosystem it's in and understand what the advantages are of having taxes at some of the rates that we've had for a while. I would flag, for example, the transient occupancy tax stands to be one of the highest revenue generators for us as a standalone measure. But one of the things that has also, after COVID, allowed us to have a higher occupancy rate is because we have lower tax rates than Berkeley and Oakland. And so competitively, our hotels have performed better in some ways. So there's a lot of economic factors, and I think the Economic Development Advisory Committee is a really important partner here. I think the Budget Advisory Committee is a very important partner here, and the ongoing work from the Finance Department to keep us abreast of that. And I agree that, I think that this council needs to, in the fall of next year, really seriously undertake an examination of where the fiscal status of the city is at that time, what potential revenue items would be appropriate for a general election ballot in 2026, and do the necessary polling and development to bring something to actionable item by the July deadline in order of 2026 to have something on the ballot. So that's, that's the process that I'm hoping that we kick off here in December to get the council information about these options so that it can make the best decision as the time presents to itself. And I just want to thank you for providing a very transparent summary of those things.
Thank you, Member Bowthers. So I just want to note that we are, we're looking for providing direction to staff in whether to implement these proposed budget strategies that are recommended from the Budget and Governance Committee. Do we need a motion for that, or is it just a discussion?
Just, just direction, no, no motion is necessary.
Member Pryforce?
I also want to provide a alternate narrative, which is that when a group of consultants come to a city and the city says, well, we have these parcels and we want to make good on them, and they say, well, biotech is hot, build biotech, and then we build towards that, and then the market conditions change, do we blame the market or do we, do we blame the, the leadership that, that made those decisions? Because staff is going to follow the direction. And so as much as we can place that on the market, we also, as leaders, have to take accountability for the direction that we provide to our staff to build towards a market and sort of pigeonhole ourselves towards that. And then when things change, we have to take responsibility for that and accountability for that. And I think that that's something that's really important, that this is not, these are decisions that are not made in, in some sort of nebula, that these are decisions that you trust us to make, and if we don't get it right, if we don't project right, if we don't get the right advice and insight, then it can hurt our city. And, and so, you know, I appreciate everything that you're, you're sharing with us as to how we navigate those kinds of decisions. But those decisions do fall on leadership. And so the decisions that I make as a leader, I'm accountable to as relates to the fiscal, fiscal health of the city. And, and I'm hoping that those leaders of the past that took us in this direction also take responsibility and accountability for the decisions that they made.
Member Bowthers?
Yeah, just to clarify, that's not how anything really works. So builders and developers and people who want to build things, who own private property, they, they actually respond to the market and they bring what they want to propose to the planning commission where it gets reviewed. If it meets the requirements to be approved, it goes through the approval process. Rarely does it actually touch the city council for that. The city council doesn't give direction and go around telling property owners, you should build. build life sciences or you should build an apartment building. That's actually not the purview. It's actually against constitutional law to do that. So leadership should take responsibility for things like how it budgets the city, how we use the revenues that we're entrusted with, whether those are revenues from taxes paid by businesses, residents, whether those are use taxes, whether those are fees, other things that come into the city. The council has an absolute responsibility for transparency and accountability to how it spends the money, ensuring that that money goes back into community-based services. But to surmise or suggest that the council makes these decisions in some sort of manner that directs people how to spend their money or to build on a community property that they own is just not a reflection of reality, unfortunately.
Member Pryforce?
So my email account, pryforce@emeryville.org, is filled with proposals as to what councils should suggest how a city moves forward with what they do with their available land, with their land use. If Berkeley is building into biotech, Oakland is building into biotech, and other cities are building into biotech, then they're all listening to the same people. And once again, that is an accountability because, you know, business 101 is, you don't flood, you don't, when you're trying to meet a demand, you want to look at how much supply is being provided. And so if you're building what everyone else is building, then you're making it competitive. You, I'm sorry, you're making it non-competitive. And so if we're going to be advising our staff towards any particular direction, we need to make sure that it's informed as much as possible so that when everyone zig's, we actually zag. And we zag in a direction that we feel is going to be fiscally responsible for our city. But if we zig with everybody else and then everybody else also suffers from the same market conditions, then that's something that we have to own. We have to eat it and then we have to move forward thinking a lot better about how we make these decisions and how we advise our city staff on how to move forward.
Mayor Welch, before we take your comment, I just want to note that member Carr was not feeling well and has dropped off the call. Please proceed.
I just, point of information, this is, we're giving direction, right? We gave direction, so like a whole debate about market conditions and who's responsible for what and the opinions on who's responsible for what, that's not necessary, right? We can give direction at this point, we've given direction.
Staff, do you have the direction you need?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great, thank you, members. I'd like to move on to item 12.5, the Fortieth Street Multimodal Project Staff Update on Traffic Analysis, Grant Efforts and Project Schedule.
Good evening, council members, mayor and vice mayor. Just waiting for the presentation to get started. No worries. Is everything okay? It's all good.
Just to clarify, Mohammed, I'd like to take this item 12.5 with the subitem 12.5.1.
So we're here today for an update on the Fortieth Street Multimodal Project, parts one and two. Next slide. You have here an overview of the map. The project starts at the border with Oakland, continues down 14th Street, wraps around to the IKEA entrance, and then back in July of 2023, there was an extension along Shell Mound all the way to Christie Avenue. Next slide. The project includes a two-way cycle track and bus lanes in various, at different configurations depending on which segment of the project it is in. Next slide. So I'll take you through a presentation overview. First, we'll talk about the traffic analysis for part one, with that included the analysis of the full and partial closures that council instructed staff to analyze last July. Then we'll go into traffic analysis of part two, which is a segment that extends from IKEA to Christie Street, Christie Street along Shell Mound Street with a protected bikeway on the west side of the street. We'll then talk into the, about the status of grants and funding. We'll talk about the project schedule. And finally, we'll talk about the actual action item that is on the agenda for tonight, which is the Second Amendment for the design contract. Next slide. So for the traffic analysis for part one, that included the closures, we have seen 12 ped bike collisions in the last, in a fair five-year period. The way we have approached this work is to take a proactive perspective to the design. So not only are we trying to address problems where we see they have arisen, but we are trying to proactively design safe systems before we actually see collisions. The actual closures have not yet been approved by city council. In particular, the full closure at Hubbard is very sensitive because there are high bike speeds that would be present going down the Shell Mound Bridge. There are constrained sightlines and at that particular location, there is a necessity for the bus to merge into the general purpose lane, making it, providing an additional constraint. Overall, we see bus travel times improving along the corridor. There is some delay to all modes and to the buses at the transit hub that is created by additional safety measures that are needed as part of the project. Overall, delay on Park Avenue and Hollis Street as a result of the side street closures remains under 20 seconds average. Next slide. Now we go into the traffic analysis for part two of the project, again, extending from the IKEA entrance all the way to Christie Avenue. Next slide. The two-way cycle track is on the western side of the street. By being on the western side of the street, it provides a direct connection from the Bay Bridge to Christie Avenue cycle track. It also minimizes interaction with turning movements from the commercial properties that are there along that stretch. And overall, vehicle delay remains under 35 seconds. Next slide. Moving on to grants and funding. Overall, these two projects in combination with each other cost a total of $30 million. Right now, we have $17 million in existing funding from six different grants. The budget increased for two different reasons. One was because we added part two, so that hat came with additional costs for construction. And the original part one experienced what everywhere, everyone else in the economy experienced, which was COVID inflation. So we had a $13 million shortfall. We, since last July, have applied for six different grants. Unfortunately, we did not receive two of them that are there up on the screen and we are waiting for word on the four remaining grants, the last of which we should receive information about in May coming up. Next slide. Moving on to the project timeline, the work on the grants to fund this project has caused delay in the timeline. Fortunately, we have completed the design in this winter, essentially very, this month has, the design has been completed. We are working on our environmental clearance and we anticipate that in the spring of the upcoming year. After that, we plan on coming to council for approval of the closures. And then in the fall or winter of 2025, we hope to begin construction. Next slide. Finally, we have the professional services contract. That's the action item on the docket for tonight. We're looking at $597,000 extra dollars to fund the additional grant work that was done to try to plug the delta that's there on the construction costs of the project, to fund the traffic analysis work that was done, that to fund the future bid analysis support that will be necessary once we bid the project, and to support the project during construction when we are ready for construction. And there are sufficient funds in unallocated fund for 75. And essentially, I also have brought with me here today, Rob Reese from Farr and Pierce, who prepared the traffic report, and we have Jennifer Harmon, our lead civil engineer, designed to answer any questions you all may have. That's it.
Thank you, Mohammed. Any clarifying questions from council? Yes. Member Pryforce?
Thank you, sorry. Sorry, Vice Mayor Moore. Would it be possible for you to render the police reports from those, from those accidents?
If requested by council, that we can provide that.
Okay, okay, so it would have to be a vote from the council or?
We can provide, we can provide those police reports.
Okay, got it, got it. Actually, could you do it maybe 10 years? Yeah.
So sorry, Vice Mayor Moore, if I can just interject, it actually would be a vote of the council because you're directing additional work and what I'm hearing you now say is 10 years, that would take staff time, so we would want direction from the full council, please.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions? On the topic of the police report, by a show of hands, is there support from the council for that information? I'll move that call to the member discussion. Let's first take public comment. Members of the public, you can come to the podium and you'll have two minutes to speak.
I'm Tim Robinson and with Butner Properties. Butner Properties is an Emeryville property owner of more than 70 years. Our properties are located along the north side of Hubbard and Fortieth Street. Access to small businesses located at these properties will be adversely impacted by the proposed street closures that are part of the project. We have significant concerns with the city of Evermills traffic report that was released on October 31st. Comparing the city's traffic report to the traffic study commissioned by Butner Properties from Mr. Steve Abrams of Abrams Associate Traffic Engineering, the following concerns were identified. The city used accident data that was well over five years old. The city presented the accident data from 2015 to 2019. The Abrams study was based on the most recent four years of accident data currently available, which is 2018 to 2022. One might conclude the city decided to present older data to make it look like there are a lot more accidents on Hubbard Street. At least one of the bicycle accidents they reported at Hubbard in figure one is nine years old, occurred in 2015. We feel that this is misleading as those accidents are well over five years old. And the Abrams analysis of recent accident data is much more accurate and relevant. The city only studied near-term 2025 traffic conditions using current low traffic counts. Any analysis of future volumes would have confirmed the Abrams study conclusions about the project causing significant future increases in queuing and delays. So it appears the city just decided to leave that out. From the Abrams study, the street closures would provide no benefit to bicycle safety as the most, as the vast majority of, 80% of bicycle accidents occurred at signalized intersections using data from 2018 to 2022. The closure of Hubbard Street and Holden Street would be detrimental to the viability of several small businesses located. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other members of the public? Welcome, you have two minutes.
Hello, I'm Sam Gould. I'm a resident of the Park Avenue neighborhood, living within two blocks of the intersection between Fortieth and Hubbard. Last month, I was hit by a turning car only a couple of blocks from here while on my bike on Fortieth Street. So you can imagine that I'm very excited for this project to bring safer streets to where I live. I was surprised and disappointed to learn of item 8.11 on the amended contract allocating $100,000 to study allowing right turns from Fortieth onto Hubbard, exactly how I was hit by an inattentive driver. I ask that you remove item 8.11 from the contract with Diablo Engineering Group and move forward with the project without considering this alternative. The current design with the reduced scope of closures is already a compromise and was approved by the majority of council. You don't need me to tell you that allowing right turns from Fortieth would be unsafe. The traffic study found this as well. This is quoted directly from your staff report from this item. The closure of Hubbard to turning traffic follows the safe systems approach by removing conflicts and addresses the following safety concerns from stakeholders and decision-makers. Eastbound bicyclical riders traveling at high speeds down Shell Mound Bridge, which has a greater than 5% grade, and conflicting with vehicles turning right to and from Hubbard Street. Trees and poles and signage constraining sightlines between drivers turning right from Hubbard Street and eastbound bike riders with project construction. And the bus lane that ends at Hubbard Street, where buses merge into one shared mixed flow lane over the bridge, increases rear-end crash potential with right-turning traffic onto Hubbard Street. This same report shows Hubbard has the most injuries of any unsignalized intersection on this corridor. I urge you not to include this costly study for an alternative design in the contract amendment. It has the potential to seriously compromise pedestrian safety and runs counter to our city's commitment to Vision Zero. I also ask that you formalize the closures before the summer date to prevent further obstruction. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm going to skip introductions because I feel like everyone knows me at this point. I have a question for Mohammed and those who, and the traffic report in general. The traffic, I just want to reiterate what the Butner Properties representative talks about, which is that the traffic data that was polled was from 2015 to 2018. Is there any traffic data from 2019 to 2024 that can be polled along with this report? Is it appropriate to rely on nine-year-old data? My other question is, considering how sensitive this corner is, and we're property owners as well on this corner, is there relevance to look at a traffic light? It feels like this, the word sensitive has come up a lot of times on this corner. And rather than closing or not closing, is there an opportunity to put a traffic light at this corner? I also, yeah, I think those are my main points. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor Welch, council members, thank you for the opportunity. My name's James McGoey, I have a property business over on Watch Street. I'd like to start with a quote from the New Testament. It is quoted, "It is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for a rich man to enter the kingdom of God," end quote. So too, for a vehicle to enter Watch Street. Going to the technical memorandum dated October 28, 2024, Figure One, which outlined vehicles and cyclists and vehicle pedestrian collisions over a five-year period, notably zero occurred at the intersection of Fortieth Street and Watts. On page three of that same memorandum, I'm quoting, "The crosswalk and two-way cycle track are raised to sidewalk level crossing Watch Street to slow right-turning traffic." This change follows the safe system approach by reducing turning vehicle speeds. So I'd ask you to imagine, if you would, vehicles turning, since Watch Street has been selected as a partial closure, having vehicles turn from the far-left lane adjacent to the median, across the traffic, oncoming traffic, including the bus lane, and having those vehicles have to go up and over a sidewalk height in order to come down onto the other side, well, what would occur as a result? I can tell you in my conversations with numerous, more than a dozen, professional truck drivers, private as well as companies such as FedEx.
Thank you for your comment.
You're going to come to a stop. And so will traffic.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Palmerant. My company owns a business, a life science building at the corner of Park and Halleck Street. We're longtime owners in Emeryville. We're concerned with what's being proposed here. We never got adequate notice regarding this and we're And we're not aware of any community outreach regarding this. This is all kind of news to us now. We're also concerned with the road closures and how they'll directly impact the ingress and egress of the business that's located on our property. So overall, we object to this project.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, council. We have met with all of you this summer to discuss this project and how this will negatively impact all the businesses along the north side. We have found from our outreach after speaking to all of you that your outreach program, which was 30 days, according to your engineer over there, was not enough time. And we are finding out now, we are reaching out to so many property owners and businesses that were never notified. How could you never notify a business or a property owner of something of this magnitude? It was improper notification. And you talk about transparency. There is no transparency. You've just been trying to slip this through the community as fast as you can. And all we're hearing now is debt. I've heard about debt and all of the spend that the city wants to do, but you have no funding. You're looking for more funding, but you can't even take care of what you have now. So closing businesses, closing roads, and now shuffling, pushing all that traffic to Park Street? Doesn't make any sense, not even for a bike person. So a light makes more sense. We have requested that numerous times, and we fall on deaf ears. So we are requesting a signalized light at the corner of Hubbard and 40th for protection of pedestrians, bicyclists, and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us. Thank you all for meeting with us as well individually over the past months. We appreciate that. I'm not going to repeat anything everybody said, but I will just like to point out that the website really doesn't call out the street closures. The diagram key doesn't even mention it. And for such an important aspect of this project, I feel that it's just not appropriate to not call that out and highlight these things. There is a footnote that is mentioned, very small print, but the diagram key does not show it. And the blockage itself is not even colored. It's just a white barrier in the map. And it's very difficult to discern what it is. I'd also like to call out that the traffic report does mention some modifications to Park Avenue. Right now, there's some restrictions for trucks there. And if this project was to go forward, Park Avenue, there would need to be modifications for truck access and emergency vehicle access. As right now, Park Avenue has restrictions for trucks. So I just wanted to call that as well. But most importantly, the transparency of the issue I agree with and the traffic report being, using old data, is troubling as well. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? I'll close public comment, and we can bring this back to council for discussion. Member Pryforce?
So in addition to the question I had about, because I just feel like I met with these folks, like all of you have, and is hearing their comments and some of the things that were raised, old accident reports, why is there a traffic light, the negative effects that would have on north side businesses. I just feel like there's just not enough information in front of me. One of the things that I have a question for Mohammed, if it's okay for you to come up, that I have is, when I first moved to Emeryville, well, no, no. When I first visited Emeryville, I remember it was to go to Target. And that's when I fell in love with Emeryville. I was, oh, this is great, and that's wonderful. And then everyone said, yeah, but you should hear about what they did with Shellmount. And, you know, the disrespect that we engage with in terms of burial ground, native burial ground. And we can name our parks after these communities all we want, but when it comes down to it, that stain is still there. And thankfully, you know, cities like Berkeley and others are actually making some sort of amends. But being in the seat that I'm in, I'm worried about making some of those same mistakes, especially as it relates to gentrification. And residential communities can be gentrified, and so can businesses. Has there ever been an impact report on, you know, through this process, on what the street closures would have on local businesses?
The traffic study analyzes the access and levels of service and the ease with which traffic is able to access the various neighborhoods.
Got it. So it sounds like we've done some traffic studies. And there's also been a question, which is why it's important to get in front of me, what the accident reports. And just to do a little more deeper dive, I've read through the traffic studies, but there's just more information I need to see. But when it comes to financial impact on these businesses, has there been ever a study on that? So what prevents cities from making decisions that will drive a bunch of businesses to close? And because Liz Ortega, Assemblywoman Liz Ortega, she just hosted a documentary called "The Apology", which is about here in the Bay Area, how cities and, you know, made decisions that completely gentrified and erased a community of color. And so I don't want to be in that seat to do that. And I don't want to, because I imagine when I did meet with some of these businesses, many of their staff, you know, the people who are workers are folks of color. And so I'm concerned about how it affects their families. We've never made an impact, a study, on exactly what the number is or how it affects these businesses should we move forward with these street closures. Am I correct that we've never made an actual study or did any research? Because then we would know from you and from the city what's correct and what's true as opposed to what they're saying.
So what's changing before and after the project is the traffic access, right? And the possible delays and the safety improvements. That's what's being analyzed. And then through that, folks are able to deduce and make judgments about what they think will, how it will or will not impact their business. But a direct study has not taken place.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, brother. No, that was the question I had, sorry.
Any other member comments? Member Bowthers?
I have a few questions for you or the consultant, if either of you would like to answer them. The first is, could you explain why we use older historical data?
I'll pass that on to our consultants. Rob Reese with Farron Pierce. Our firm did the traffic analysis. We used 2015 to 2019 data because it was pre-COVID data. We thought about using the more recent data, but with COVID happening in 2020 and then leading into 2021, we had dampened activity, both vehicle and pedestrian bicycle. And so that data would be considered an outlier. And so we used five-years data before that. As it was mentioned, the most recent data that is available is through 2022. And so we don't have 2023 data, don't expect it for another year. And we'd be about four or five years out before we have a complete set of post-COVID data that we could use.
Thank you. A couple of follow-up questions to that. The practice of using the pre-COVID data, is that a standard practice in the industry right now as it relates to transportation and traffic impacts and reports?
It's a combination. There are some communities that insist that we only look at three-years' worth of data or the most recent data. A lot of communities are not looking at that COVID period of 2020 to 2021 because it is so dampened. Most communities do that. But to call it a standard practice, it's a best practice? And I'm an engineer, and so standard means a requirement? It's a best practice.
Yeah, it's been my experience with transit agencies, looking at modeling, coming back to work and riding transit. And I wondered if that's the same for traffic analysis as a best practice? Okay. There were statements made about large increases to delays in traffic. My read of the report was that it was around 30 seconds at the most. Is that your recollection of the report?
Correct.
Okay. And that there was statements made in a response from the Butner Properties that there would be, quote, "no benefit to bicycle safety." Is that your assessment of the traffic analysis and the project as it's designed and proposed?
No. I'll go ahead and say it. That's an old-fashioned perspective that we just maintain and operate our roads until people die. And then after they die, we decide to do something about that one location. The safe systems approach, if I could read briefly what it says?
Please do.
"The safe system approach seeks to create a self-enforcing design where safe behaviors are the easy behaviors and mistakes do not have lethal consequences." The way that, when I started my career in the 80s, the way that we did things was that we looked at the past. We only looked at the past, and we only made changes around safety if we had past safety problems. What we do now is we look at, the comment was made about Watts. And why are you doing anything at Watts? Because there's no crashes there, therefore, why would you do anything? Well, that design is not safe for cycling, especially cycling in a cycle track. And so that's why we look at making modifications from a safety perspective. And that's what we prioritized in our analysis.
And when it comes to the data related to accidents, injuries, and deaths, pedestrian, bicycle, or otherwise, the data, when you do these analyses, is a retrospective analysis. It's a factual finding of what has happened historically. But it is not an indicator or predictor of how many people's behaviors will change as a modality choice or what the likelihood of an increased number of accidents, injuries, or deaths would be without system change to the infrastructure. Is that correct?
Correct. It's, yeah.
Okay, I have no more questions at this time. Thank you.
Any other member comments or discussion? Member Welch, Mayor Welch?
I had a question about the community engagement piece. Mohammed, if he could come back up, so I could just ask.
To the podium, Jennifer Harmon, who helped lead that portion of the work.
Thank you.
Yes, so we had community design and architecture onboard for the outreach process. They sent out to the 500-foot radius around the project. And then they also followed up with key members where there were direct impacts to properties. So we have had meetings with several of those properties, and they at least had a discussion. So at Hubbard, there were mailers sent out to owners and businesses. But, you know, if there was no response, there might not have been a direct meeting because there wasn't a direct impact on the property. It would be indirect from the traffic. But the traffic showed minimal delay and that the movements could still be made. So there, like I said, we did make some adjustments to designs based on meetings with different property owners. And we have met also with the Hubbard property owners on site and discussed concerns with them. So, and I think it is a little difficult to analyze the full impact of, from a, you know, financial and development standpoint. But we're focused on the traffic and that there would still be access.
Oh, Jennifer, just a follow-up question. In the meetings that you were able to hold with those who responded back to you, did they make any mention of a financial impact?
Yes. The Hubbard property owners did say that they had concerns about a reduction in access having impacts to the businesses. So it wouldn't be as easy for somebody to just turn off of 40th to access businesses. And then also, in the future development, you know, they felt that the access would be decreased. So that, yeah, there is access with the block on Hubbard or, you know, Park, the other three streets still. But off of 40th, that access would be removed. So they did bring up that they were concerned about that economically, the future development and their current uses.
But then to reiterate, there were edits made based off of some of the meetings that you were able to hold, businesses that did respond back to you?
Yes, so we did talk to them about how their trucks accessed the property. And we created a larger area at the end, at the dead end, so that the trucks could still pull forward and back up into the loading zone. So, yeah, we did make some adjustments there.
Okay, so there was feedback, then there were adjustments made based upon that feedback. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Those were all of my questions. Thank you, Jennifer.
Any other member comments or discussion? Member Pryforce?
Sorry. Do you have video footage of what was recorded when you had, you had actual trucks make these maneuvers? Do you have any recorded footage?
We, no, not at Hubbard. We did, actually, we have not done any, we have not done any video footage, like during meetings. We did do video on these streets ahead of the design to see what the movements were and how much truck traffic was observed in the existing condition. Yes.
As an additional clarification, normally, this type of work is done with modeling, computer CAD design. And that's how we determine the layout of the intersections. So that work was done for all of these closures.
Got it. And I just want to share that I have a video that was recorded by me. Some of the business owners were able to demonstrate the use of some of their vehicles on the road. And it was pretty bad, in terms of the turn and how it backed up traffic. So essentially, whether it's a, well, definitely a full street closure, you know, that's it. But a partial street closure looked like it significantly slowed down traffic. It actually was pretty bad. And so I think that that's also something that I would like to see. I think it's just really important that, you know, from an engineering standpoint, in terms of any modeling or testing, you know, there's bias from how I angle my phone. And, you know, and so it's really important that even though these businesses are saying that this has an impact on them, that the city staff are able to collect this information. collect this information. Financial study, how does it, you know, if, once we step out of modeling, how does this actually affect the, you know, the use of trucks when it comes to these redesigns? Like, all, all that information being presented before us, before I okay anything that even marginally looks like gentrification, residential or, or commercial. And I think that that's something that I am concerned about. And, and I think it's time that city leaders start to use the word gentrification much more often when it comes to our communities, because it happens, and there's devastation, and then we rise in our political status, and we, and we just, you know, and we, it, it's, I, I don't want to be a part of that. And, so it's just really, really important, just taking it from a neutral stance, that I just have as much information as possible. And so, and that's, and it feels like there's just not enough information in front of me.
Do we have any other member comments? Member Bowthers.
I think, I have no more questions, Reeve, if you want to sit down. I just would, I would just share, you know, my thoughts on this overall. The, the purpose of this project, we actually first conceptualized this project in 2017, when we were given a grant to do a transit hub at the corner of San Pablo and Forteth Streets, and the council supported looking into a broader vision to improve the safety on the corridor. This is a safety project, and it will improve safety for all users of the corridor, and that, in my opinion, is the priority of the community, is to ensure that people who live here are safe in their person, and it's safe in their movement, and it's safe in their home. When we look at the design elements of this project, I think there's a couple important things that I heard the consultant mention, that I just want to speak to a little further. The analysis that's done in the traffic report is a retrospective. It's intended to provide a snapshot of what the current and existing conditions are, and what they are in a status quo. And the proposed project is intended to bring a number of elements, the most important of which is safety, to the corridor, to give people who use something other than a car the opportunity to move safely in their community, as pedestrians, as cyclists, as skaters, as strollers, as people who have different abilities, but want to be able to access their community through something other than a vehicle. It'll also provide transit enhancements. My position has always been that I never want to be the councilperson who installs a Teddy Bear Memorial in my community, because we didn't take some proactive action to actually make our community safer. I don't see the value in mourning the loss of people when it's known hazard in our community today, that the streets that we have are designed for the expediency of motor vehicle drivers, which, in a contest with a pedestrian or cyclist, are always going to win. The pedestrian and the cyclist are the most vulnerable road users, and you actually create safer communities when you design them for the most vulnerable people in them. And I think that the design of a double-directional elevated cycle track is one of the few places in modern road design and community infrastructure that really elevates all of the best practices available and known to us today, and has a demonstrated track record of delivering safer outcomes. And to me, the comments that I read in a couple of the letters and emails I've received, saying that it's an insignificant number of people who died in the, in that five-year period, or the number isn't very high, any death is unacceptable to me. Any injury is unacceptable. They're all preventable. There are all, there are known investments in infrastructure improvements today that can make those things happen, and sometimes that requires vehicles to slow down. And I think we often don't step out of the car and actually experience modality from a different user's point of view. I, I think that it's, it's very common for people who are presented with change to infrastructure around their property or home or business, to have the reactions we've heard today and we've heard in the past, that this will kill our business, or that this will make our business inaccessible, when the reality is, it's not making anyone inaccessible. People largely use GPS to navigate their communities today already. They'll use that to find where they're going in the future. There's signage that can be installed, as it is done in every other community in America, to help guide people on wayfinding to where they want to go. And the reality is that studies have been done, and more are being commissioned right now, that actually show economic enhancement to communities that invest in this type of infrastructure. So, stating that businesses will suffer, or we will lose money, or that nobody will access, these are the arguments that people have historically fallen on, that have more time and again been disproven. And the reality is, at the end of the day, those are all still important factors. The viability of our business community, the ability of property owners to use their property effectively, those are all things that matter and are factors that have to be considered in the overall balance. But when I make the evaluation, the number one factor for me is the safety of other people. And I think that that's something that this community has done a good job in its past decisions on infrastructure prioritizing. We've seen more and more people make choices that are healthier for them. I've seen more children using our streets and roads and sidewalks in ways that I didn't when I moved here 15 years ago, and I support that vision. And so, I will be happy to make a motion to approve the funding requested by staff to continue the work that's being done.
Member Pryforce.
So, Nima, who does the electronic billboards, you know, I think, I think he just got a real big approval process to happen in, in Oakland, they approved. And, and I remember when Nima approached me, and he's, he's, he's a lobbyist, and so essentially, he was a really cool lobbyist, really good dude. And I remember when he approached me about getting electronic billboards in Emeryville, he said, you know, I said, well, what is, you know, have you spoken to the other council members? And he said, yeah, I remember, well, Councilmember Bowthers, he was really concerned about the birds. And I said, oh, okay, well, I'm concerned about the birds too. Right? What I'm criticizing here is the process. That if the process is, is that if we are asking, well, how does electronic billboard affect birds, then we also need to ask, how does a street redesign affect the community, the community that's been here for a while? And so, it, this, you're right, this is a safety project, and no one's taking away from that. No one's taking away from that it's a safety project. The problem is the process, and what they're talking about is that the process is not just that it hasn't been inclusive, which is what I'm concerned about, right? Because that's when you, that's when gentrification begins to pop up as a flag. It's not that it hasn't been inclusive, it may even be unethical. And, you know, in the history of Emeryville, I mean, it's, I mean, if we, you know, our, our history, you know, you know, as, as the rotten city, it's not like we have a great history when it comes to ethics, especially when it comes to this body. And so, I'm concerned about any process that, you know, I remember when, when Councilmember Bowthers mentioned that the reason why we don't have a whole bunch of stop signs at the Greenway is because our, our, you know, our city planner, our lead city planners just didn't like them. He didn't like them. He did, he, he thought, you know, whatever he thought, he just didn't like them. So, we can make decisions based upon those, or why is the police station almost falling into the sea near the Watergate community? Is it because, you know, a former, a councilmember mayor wanted a police station to be built next to them to feel safer? So, we, and that's the thing, is it's like, when we make these decisions, and, and these decisions aren't fair, they aren't equitable, then if these businesses are going to change their livelihoods, let it be a fair process. Let it be a process that is equitable, and, and, and we have as much information in front of me. And so, then I can go on with my life long after I'm a longer councilmember, and say, hey, I made a decision based upon the best information that was in front of me. And I think that that is what I'm concerned about, is that the best information is in front of me, it's not in front of me, and then thus, when they say that, that they, they feel that there's something not right here when it comes to this process, then I am lending to believe them. And, and I think that there's a lot of, there are a lot of people in Emeryville who also would lend to believe them if presented with the same information. And so, that's what I'm concerned about, is that I believe that this process hasn't been, we, we haven't, we haven't done the best at, at being able to create a process that is informed. And I would rather want that information in front of me before, you know, when eventually, when we do make these decisions, or we provide guidance, or any direction, then I could do that from an informed place.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Oh, Mayor Welch, please proceed.
I was just placing my hand to second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers.
Aye.
Councilmember Car, Councilmember Carr is absent. Councilmember Pryforce.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 13, Department Head Reports.
No report this evening.
Item 14, Future Agenda Item Requests from Council Members. Do we have any future agenda items? Seeing no future agenda items, we'll adjourn this meeting. The time is 9:45.